No, they're talking about all of our letterhead in envelopes.
They essentially wanted to be sponsors of the city of Lincoln Park.
They wouldn't.
Will they pay any?
They were gonna donate $695,000 to the Department of Public Services in return for us, putting their name, address, and phone number on every envelope that we send out for the next 11 years.
Everything we do.
And they're not a vendor of ours?
Uh-uh.
So, yeah, that comes out to like $70,000 a year. We can get more than that.
I give them kudos for their ingenuity.
It's that time. Can we have the camera, please? Oh, this is the wrong one.
That was the resolution we passed to set out.
Oh.
Attached to the back of it should be your guide sheet for this meeting.
Okay, we're here at the city council to have a study session for food trucks. Look over the ordinance, if we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could please have a roll call.
Certainly, Councilperson Bear.
Here.
Dupre.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Salcedo.
Here.
Zor.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
And Mayor Higgins.
Here.
So, as I said, we are here to talk about the food truck ordinance. And what we're going to do, before I turn this over to City Manager, we had a little meeting earlier today, and what we want to do is go over everything one line by line. But what I would like to keep on that line way of talking, and so that at the end, if there's something that we have not brought up that you want to bring up, then we'll bring that all together up, so that we stay on task rather than jumping all over the place. Okay, and with that, I'll turn this over to the City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, tonight, we're here to talk about the food truck ordinance. The food truck ordinance originally came into being here in the city of Lincoln Park in 2021. Since that time, we haven't really had a ton of success with it. Outside of special events, we really haven't had a proliferation of food trucks in the city. We haven't had a large bit of activity. And so what we wanted to do was bring everybody together, kind of talk about some options, look at some ideas to try and streamline the process, and also potentially open it up so that maybe we can get a little more activity with food trucks in the city. So, a couple overall things. Buying larger ordinance isn't really that bad. It's pretty solid, but, you know, again, when something's not working, you take a look at it and tweak it. For reference, the city clerk has put together a little terms and definitions sheets for you guys to look at. Quickly, a food truck is any motorized or non-motorized vehicle, trailer, or other device designed to be portable and not permanently attached to the ground from which food is vended, served, displayed, or offered for sale. A food truck license is an annual license which must be obtained by all food trucks to operate within the city. Food truck zone, this is something you guys have yet to hear about, is an area of city-owned property designated by the council where licensed food trucks are allowed to park and operate. Rules and regulations for these zones will be set by the council from time to time. Food truck location permit, this is also kind of a newer idea. A licensed food truck may operate on private property after obtaining a location permit for a nominal fee. A letter of permission from the property owner must be presented at time of application. Location permit must also be used for public property not included in a designated food truck zone. Regulations for these permits will be subject to safety regulations from the building and fire departments. So, with that out of the way, kind of going through the ordinance. The first couple sections, there's really nothing we're looking at suggesting to change. So, 820, 82601, 82602, we're not really suggesting much for changes there. But you get into the background investigations, so license issuance investigations. Here's an area where I think we can, we all agree that we might be able to streamline this a little bit. And this is in doing the background check on individual food vendors who are already licensed through the state, who already have a Wayne County Health Department license. It seems like an additional process that's not necessary. So, we would recommend at this point removing item A, and then also items C and D, because those are tied to it. Item B, this is, we recommend putting more in writing kind of what our practice is, because typically, if somebody does have an inspection from another jurisdiction, another municipality, we tend to accept those anyway. So, instead of just, the applicant shall have all motor vehicles used in the course of business inspected for safety and fitness by the traffic division of the police department. We would also add something about, or proof of another jurisdiction's inspection. So, that essentially will take care of that section. The license fees, as we've gone through, we've talked about reducing the fees. We don't have an exact number yet. We'll come back with that when we actually come back with the ordinance. But we think, we think-
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Before we move on, can we go back to, you want to remove A?
Right.
C?
A, C, and D.
A, C, and D.
C and D are ancillary to item A. If we keep item A, we would need to keep those, but if we eliminated A, there's no need for those, too.
Does, then can I ask you if a food truck permit has, or license, has been granted by the state? Or the county, has a background check been done by them?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but honestly, we run an iChat for these. It's the, shoot, what does iChat stand for?
I don't remember, but it's a very, it checks their criminal background to see if they have any pending warrants or any convictions or anything like that.
Yeah, and a lot-
So, it's not so much a thorough background check, just a-
No, because we can't use Lean on this.
Very cursory.
You know, we can't, we can't use the law enforcement information network system for this. So, the only thing we really can do is an iChat, and honestly, what you're getting on an iChat, you know, you're not, not getting a ton, anyway. So, that's kind of why we're looking at getting rid of this. Something else that can help speed up the process, not that an iChat takes an extra long time, but it's just little things we can do to try and-
But it seems to be something that irritates the applicants.
Yeah.
Why are you doing a background check on me? Because you don't do a background check when somebody buys a building and opens a restaurant.
Right.
Ah, so.
And it's also one more thing we have to charge for. So, if we don't have to do that, that's one way we can bring fees down.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You have all the, with the C or the B, I'm not seeing anything in here about the fire inspections for the suppression systems.
Well, we can certainly, certainly add that.
That's what makes them go boom. If they're not right, we don't want them to go boom.
No, absolutely, and that's something, I think that's part of the vehicle safety inspection.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the sheet Carrie gave us, the food truck location permit, obtaining for a local, location for a nominal fee. If that per, location is a private property, is that fee going to the property owner or the city?
It would go to the city to process the permit, but we'll get to the, we'll actually get to the-
And well, I just went there, we went there for-
No, I got you. I wasn't getting, I was just giving, so as these terms come out, you guys have an idea what I'm talking about.
It's just the fire inspection is really important.
It is, and that's part of the vehicle safety inspection, as I understand it. Okay, so, the limitations on issuance of licenses, we don't really have any recommendations or suggestions on this. Same thing with license card and stickers, most of that is very standard. Expiration, this is standard with all of our license regulations in the city. License revocation, you definitely want to have the ability to do this. Same thing with appeals. And then as we get into the actual regulations, again, we didn't write very onerous regulations, but there are, there are some areas that we can approve. The first five or so seem fine, right? A through E. F is where we've ran into some issues. Needing a special event permit to do, to put a food truck on private property or anywhere is a little bit, little bit onerous. Something that has to come to council as opposed to being able to be handled administratively. So, this is where we would suggest some changes, which would be to eliminate special event permits from the city, essentially replace it with this idea of a location permit. And as we said, a location permit is needed to operate on private property, also would be needed to operate on a, on public property, if it's not, if this is going to happen outside of what we're calling the designated food truck zone. And we'll get into that after we go through, but for the most part, that was-
I'm sorry, James, could, just step by step, so we're gonna, we're keeping the first five?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, honestly, we're gonna keep, keep all of these except for adjusting F.
Yes, they're gonna take out the special event permit and put a location permit.
Yep, and then we'll, what we'll do is we'll start implementing some language there for the location permit. But here's where, here's where I definitely want to pause for us to have some conversation, because here's where we're gonna need some direction from council. And this is on the location permit, and what kind of, what kind of regulations and limits you guys might be interested in seeing. Whether that's a limit on the number of location permits, any individual food truck can get over the course of a year, whether it's a limitation on the duration of any food truck, or location permits that a food truck can get throughout the year. So, at this point, I kind of want to open that section up for some questions and discussion.
Yeah, if I could ask a question. I see like under license expiration, it ends in May of the following year, whatever. So, is this a one-year license they're purchasing?
Not the, not the, the location permit.
Okay, so they're different things?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, this specifically, the broad license is the food truck license, which is a one-year license. That one, we've got pretty well set in the ordinance already. The location permit is, is location-specific, and that one, we don't have in here yet. We've kind of been running these through the special event process, whereas the special event typically has a specific duration, is tied to a specific location, very similar, kind of does some of the same things, but is a little bit more onerous to the applicant.
James, have we identified city-owned property that could become food truck zones?
Yes, but we'll get into the food truck zone.
Too soon?
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna jump, jump in just ahead.
So, that's not, that's not related to a location permit?
No, a location permit is an individual, so if, trying to think of some good examples, because I'm not-
Location permit will be outside of a zone.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about a designation. So, is, does all city-owned public land have to be included in a food truck zone? Or could you have public land that they could get of a separate location permit?
Yes.
As, because it says right here explicitly outside of a food truck zone, but still city property.
Absolutely, and that's-
So, I, so in that regard, that would be a location permit?
Yes, outside of what we would call a designated food truck zone.
Anticipating not having any city property fall under that classification?
I wouldn't say not having any, but not having all city property fall into the food truck zone.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, when, you know, have we identified-
Any, any city property that is not, that, part of the designated food truck zone would require the location permit.
And is it up for the, the business to find those spots? Or is it up to us to advertise or make them aware?
Are you asking about the designated zone to advertise?
No, properties outside of the designated zone.
Honestly, that's gonna fall on the food truck vendor if they want to, you know, come to the city and suggest-
So, they could potentially ask us?
Yep. They could ask us, they could ask private, a private business.
So, if they were to ask us, would it behoove us to know where those areas would be? Or would we take it on a case-by-case basis?
Well, so that'll be all part of, as we move forward with the location permit, and how we want to, how much authority the council wants to grant city staff in approving location permits when it comes to city property. And it could just simply be a policy that the council says, yes, we are okay with allowing this lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot be, to be an area some, that's eligible for location permit. We don't want it as a food truck zone where, but we want it to be eligible for somebody to pull a location permit, and then city staff can have the authority then to just approve those as they come up. That's, that would be an easier process than if every time somebody had a location permit on city property coming back to the council.
Or a special event permit?
Because then you're running almost exactly into that special event permit issue. Because then, yes, the city council could then say, these are specific areas we do not want food trucks to operate within.
We can just, in traffic areas that pose a danger. Like how we turned down La Pepe's. Yeah.
Exactly. Yes.
What do you, what kind of cost, I mean, the cost of a special event permit compared to a location permit? What's the cost?
Special event permits are $100. And we've, we've been talking about a nominal fee for the location permits, like 10 bucks.
But are you just gonna-
But that'll be ultimately-
On, on how many days are allowed to be there?
That's what, that's what he's asking you guys for input on is, are you wanting to set a limit? Originally, when I broached the subject of location permits, I felt that there should be a limit to either the number of them that they were allowed to have per year or the amount of time that they should be allowed to be parked there. That was where we were going with it at that point in time. But, you know, ultimately, the decision on that is yours, it's not mine, it's just-
I mean, I'm just curious, because a lot of cities now are not charging anything to have your food trucks, like downtown, and that, so if we want to-
But see, that would be more like the zone that he's talking about.
Right, so, yeah, if we want to encourage them to come here, and we want to designate certain areas.
Right, but that wouldn't require a location permit.
Okay, but, so they would just come, they don't need anything except their, to come in and register with you? And what is the registration fee?
Well, again, that's something that we're gonna ask you guys to, to look at. Right now, it's $250. It's, you know-
It's per year.
It's, it's high.
Yep, that's an annual.
It's high, but what we used was something that was already established, which was the ice cream vendors.
Right.
And we went along with that to see what happened with it. It's, it's a little high. I'm not gonna lie, I, I think it's high for the ice cream vendors, too. It's my personal opinion, but, again, I don't set the fees, you guys do, so.
But, yeah, so, honest, to, and we, we'll get into it next, but the food truck, the designated food truck zone is, is something where we're gonna be proposing as well as a way to kind of balance, right? The location permit versus really trying to increase the activity, right? Trying to find that balance between finding ways to encourage this activity and encourage some entrepreneurship and, and then being able to kind of designate where that happens versus wide-open allowing food truck vendors to do whatever, whatever they want, wherever, right? So, kind of trying to find that balance. So, kind of going back now to the, the location permit and looking for feedback on thoughts of limits on the number per food truck vendor, duration for, for it. These are the questions we're really looking for with regard to that.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna poll the council. How many days you think a truck should be allowed to, or a food truck should be parked in a, in a position? And how long can you pull a permit for, so?
Well, it might be encouraging if we said you could have it for 30 days. Is that too mu, you think that's too much? I'm just thinking, I'm thinking the, the application that we denied, the gentleman wanted it for, I think it was like six months or more.
And that's why I'm asking everybody's thought idea.
So, if we, I'm, well, I'm thinking if we do 30 days, and then that'll give us an idea if it's working. Is it working for them and is it working for us? Are they causing a problem there? Kind of thing.
Depending on the, the number of trucks, too, if you do 30 days and their season is only this long, that would mean we could rotate trucks, so different trucks could get in instead of someone taking the whole season and parking there. But I would not like to limit that to you only get 30 days in the season. 30 days here, and then you have to have 10 days off before you come back. Or 30 days on and 30 days off, so we can rotate trucks in and out, so other people get a chance.
30 days would be, if you took 30 days off, that's a 30-year season.
Yeah, that's right.
I would say 30 days, and then you have to go someplace else.
Okay.
I, I would think that would be-
And if we limit the number of them in the zone-
Oh, again-
We're talking about the zone, we're not talking about the zone.
No zone yet.
It's strictly outside of the zone right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, because you just, you just get going at a location, and your sales are up because you have a good product.
And people know you're there, Brian.
And people know you're there, and then you have to leave.
But then again, I'm sorry.
Could we, I mean, could it be 30 days and have a rollover contingency? And say you can be there for 30 days, and you have the possibility of obtaining two additional 30-day permits consecutively?
Ultimately, that is your call.
Because I, I was honestly thinking three months. Because I know, food trucks, they have, they're in business. I don't think it's uncommon for food truck companies to be at a location for three months. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how many food trucks do that, or if not many.
And if the location, if the location is working for them, I hate to, to pull them off.
Right, make them try to sit over again someplace else.
The food truck at O'Brien's, remember when it would sit there all the time?
Can I just tell them out to you?
Sure. They were there forever.
One at a time, please, okay? To the chair, Carrie has something to say.
If it's, if it's a good location, is it fair to let that one vendor usurp it for the entire season? Just want to throw that out to you, think about that.
Okay, I think Tracy was next.
Just using the, the taco truck that used to park by O'Brien's, and I know that's E-course, but they were there all the time, and people, and around lunchtime is the only time I passed it, but it was always busy, people were always there, because they knew it was there.
They've been there for about three years.
Yeah, yeah, they, I don't know if they're still there, I don't think.
They're still there.
Are they still there?
So, if I could answer Carrie's question, you said, is it, is it fair? Well, they're getting permission from the property owner to be there, so I think it is fair, if the property owner wants them.
I'm just, yeah, if it's a, if it's a public place, if it's city-owned land.
Well, then you're talking the zones, then, right?
No, outside of the zone.
We're not talking the zones at all right now.
So, still, still location.
But city-owned property that's not in a zone.
Okay.
Right, and also, again, we could set up our own, our own specific conditions with a location permit associated with public property, because-
Which I think we should do.
Which, which could be less than a 30-day for a private property. That's, I mean, that could be, not that every location permit is good for 30 days, but an up to 30 days.
Oh, there you go.
If you're looking that way, if we wanted to put that type of language within the ordinance as far as the location permit goes, an up to 30 days could make sense.
Okay, do we have anybody against 30 days?
To, to the chair? I, I also don't think we should punish a food truck company that has done the research and found a city-owned property outside of the food truck zone that has built a market for themselves, either and just assume somebody else would just be able to slide right in after their 30 days expired. But I, I don't know what kind of, what kind of demand there will be for these permits, of course.
Right, that, that brings up a good point. So, if they wanted to renew that permit, if someone, and let's say someone else applied, what happens then?
Well, that's what we'd have to decide.
Right.
That's, that's something we have to decide. Do we, do that, do they have, do you want that person after 30 days that they've had, now they've staked that stone, that's their zone? You know, no matter, but if somebody else comes up next, the week, first week they're there and say, well, after their 30 days over, I want to try that spot, you know?
Well, I think that that would make them have to come and purchase those next 30 days, which would bump that person out.
Right.
You know, you'd have to keep a calendar, and this person's here until then. That spot's gonna open up on this day. If you want it, you have to re, get it before they renew.
Okay.
And all those things are, are things that we would end up bringing back is not so much part of the ordinance, but as part of a policy for you guys to approve, to give us the authority to, to approve location permits on city property.
Okay, and I'm gonna break here, because I think Carl has something he wanted to say.
No, I just, you know, I'm just hearing things go back and forth, and I just want to remind everybody that unless I'm missing something, we're talking about three situations. A zone, which we really haven't talked about at all.
And we don't want to talk about zone yet, we don't want to confuse people.
Right, right, and then there's a public site, which we're talking about a, a location permit, and then there is private sites, which we really haven't talked about a lot yet. So, and some of the questions and all of that, you know, just-
The, the location-
I'm just wondering if everybody's spoken.
The location permit will be the same if it is on private property-
Or public.
Or if it's on public property, not in our zone, not in the zone.
On private property?
However.
They would have to get permission from that.
Matt, they have to get permission from the city.
But this is where the private really gets into land use and zoning, and that is gonna have more of an influence over this type of decision than a permit, or else, you know, you're gonna be micromanaging a type of land use.
That's what I thought, too, that, you know, if it's, if it's a private property, how do we tell them, I mean, we set a, a limit, we set a guideline, but how do we tell them what they can do on their property? I mean, how long somebody can stay on their property, how long they can offer it to them on their property? If they have somebody that they want to put in there, you know, for the whole season, how can we tell them no?
Come on them.
We do it every day. When we're doing fire inspections, it's a private, a private business, we go in there and tell them what their codes are and what they need to do to fix it. You can do the same thing here.
Right, I know, but saying that-
So, that's, that's how you get around that.
You mean, in general, you can do the same thing, you can monitor it the same way.
You monitor it, you can charge them, you can make them setbacks from the road. We talked about this in our study session. We're gonna have rules on private property, and if they don't follow it, they're out.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're also-
That makes sense.
Yeah.
An example is the, the old real estate place on Ford Street by Sam's, or Sam's Beer Store. Nancy Diaz and her husband own that, and they have food trucks, they have taco trucks. So, we open this up, and they want to put their trucks there. Not only do they own the property, they have their own trucks. How do we tell them they can only put their trucks there for a certain amount of time?
That's what he just said, because that's what they, that's what-
No, he didn't say that, he said it can be regulated.
It can be regulated.
Yeah, he's not, and it's not time, it's do you have suppression, are you a fire hazard, et cetera?
Right, are you licensed, are you current, you sure, all that stuff.
We have, we have rules and regulations about how long an inoperable vehicle can sit in your lot.
Yes, on a private, private-
On a private driveway.
Yeah, we have rules and regulations how, how your grass can be. So, we can, we can regulate how long that their own taco truck stays on their own property at any time.
Okay, what, you know, we're dealing with, with a possible project that would have essentially a couple of trucks there, and it would be a permanent land use. Now, you're gonna invent something that, you know, we can take to the sky and say, forget, you know, doing it here? You, you know, you know, we really can't get into the details, because we haven't had that, but-
I'll through the chair real fast. First off, I think as a city, we should probably identify spots where we can have food trucks. And in some cases, you can probably have three or four, or maybe one or two. So I like the 30 day rule, maybe renew it after 30 days. If there's three of them in a row, four in a row, then if it's a good location, then they stay for an extra 30 days. But I also want to say if, if I own Sam's Beer Store and my friend Johnny has a food truck, he can stay there for two years, in my opinion, but I'm hearing that's not true.
So I think what we're running into here is an issue that had, would have to do with the site plan. Um, if, if a business came to a site plan review and said, part of my site plan is I'm going to have food trucks on a regular basis, then I think it's something different than bringing in a food truck under a, a location permit. Um, I think the location permit is something that allows something to be done on that private property that otherwise wouldn't be allowed because it wasn't part of the site plan, site plan review process. Um, and I'm looking back at John because he's going to be the one to either agree or disagree or throw something at me. Um, but I think that's kind of, I think that, that's the intention behind a location permit on private property is one, it's allowing something that wouldn't otherwise be allowed there. Um, it's ensuring that yes, this food truck does have permission from the, from the owner. Um, and three, it ensures some form of regulation to make sure that, uh, we're able to, to follow the regulations as set.
So through the chair. So what you're saying is if it's, if it's private or public, they're going to require in this, um, location permit, a site plan review?
No. No. No, 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 no. This, this is almost a way around a site plan review.
Around the site plan review.
If you will.
Do we have any way differentiating when somebody owns a property and wants their own food truck business and when somebody is truly not related to said business owner? Or would that be impossible?
I don't think we would differentiate. I think, um, if somebody has their own food truck and intends to set up shop on their private property, that essentially is going to be something that has to do with the site plan and the business license and, and business.
But if it was a random food truck company knocking on the door of a business saying, would you be willing to give me, um?
A location permit.
Yeah. A location, permission.
For a weekend, right? Or.
Still would the police and fire and building, um, have to sign off on that? Yes?
Yeah. I don't know that, I, I don't know that we, we would have to go to building.
No. Just police and fire?
Yeah. Um, or, or does the onus go on, on their private property to ensure they're following the regulation? And if we get the complaint, we come out?
Cause I mean, if they're following the, the footage away from a structure and they're got everything else up, there's no reason for any, to do anything else.
Right.
You know, so, um.
I think we're overthinking that.
Yeah, I do too, pretty much. Um, I think that the thing would be is to go with the 30 days and, um, if they want to come back, they can reapply before that 30 days is up.
We can also review in six months or a year.
Right. You know? So I think that would be a good way to go for it. So we're not actually throwing anybody out, but let them know that you're 30 days and then you can renew your permit for that long. And if someone really comes in and takes it before you renew it, there's nothing we can do about it because it's open enterprise. Um, now as far as the, um, the food truck location, no location permit for the food truck zone, how many trucks do you think are, how big is that? Where is it? What are you talking about?
Yeah, I think.
We're, we're not there yet.
Well, well, I think, I think we have about, we have reasonable direction, I think, on the location permit that we can, we can move on, um, to the, to the food truck zone. Um, so essentially the idea here is creating a space within the city, I would argue within the downtown, um, preferably a downtown parking lot, which we can measure, we can find out exactly how many food trucks we could allow there. And as, we set up some regulations that'll, that'll be, um, done through, through policy and not through ordinance, just because if we have to change them, it's easier to come back to a meeting and quickly change policy and then come be able to enforce.
Yeah.
Um, as opposed to changing an ordinance. Um, I recommend a, a specific timeframe that they can operate within this food truck zone. So like 11 a.m. to, to 9 p.m., something like, I think that was what, I, I think I stole that one directly out of Detroit, um, because it seems to be in my head. Uh, no, there, I think 9 a.m. to 10 p.m.
9 a.m. is more, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, actually Detroit's restrictions is even bigger, 5 a.m. Sorry. Um, but setting up a specific timeframe, they have to be out every day, uh, but also we, what we would look at is creating, I, not quite a registration, but almost a signup, um, that, that would be housed at the city clerk's office, whether it's, you know, you can sign up three days in advance, one day in advance, day of, that's something we're still working out. But the idea being, once it's filled, it's filled for, for that day and nobody else can come in. Um, this is, this is, uh, we're, we're trying to encourage.
If they, if they close out that night, they have to leave and come back for the next day.
Yes, if they want to come back.
They have to actually pack up and leave.
The whole truck?
That's a, that's a lot for a, a business that's coming back the next day.
But they're coming back the next day, but also it might open up this, the chance for somebody else to come in too.
So okay.
Yeah. But if it's within their 30 days?
No, no. Ignore the 30 days.
This doesn't apply to this area.
This has nothing to do with, uh, location permit.
Yeah. Now, we're, yeah, we're talking just the zone. Okay. If you're objecting to one day, how many days would you say in the zone?
Three. Three days.
You get three days. Anybody else have a problem with three days in the zone?
And we're not, we're going to allow overnight parking?
Yeah. I would argue that you're going to run into some, some serious administration issues there where now this person started on day one, this person started on day two, this person started on day, day three and is only there for one day. Trying to track that will become onerous, I think.
I also believe that we have some parking regulations that prohibit overnight parking in the.
Right.
And, and we would have to do something to, um, to change those to allow that specifically.
I think it's going to be a big deterrent. I think it's going to be a big deterrent.
Yeah. I don't really think one day is.
I don't think that's enough. That's, you know, just the cost of moving out and bringing it back is going to be a lot because those trucks use a lot of gas.
Can we break it up into one week lot?
That's possible. Um, but do you do a Thursday to Sunday as opposed to doing it during only the weekdays? You know, what do you, how do you set it up?
Well, you know, the thing, a lot of trucks have places they go on the weekends. So we could do a Monday through Wednesday and then a Thursday through Sunday. So we could break it up during the week so these trucks that go out to do events and that on the weekends will leave, but they have someplace to go on their off days. And we could fill it that, that way, the whole week.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Have, have their permits be for blocks and not just individual days. Cause I think the individual day would be like what you said would be onerous and administrative.
Ignore the idea of a permit on this one. This is permit, this is permit free.
Permit free.
The, the food truck zone, it just takes signing up within, within the clerk's office.
Okay.
And what we would do is we would probably start with one, one area, um, to really try and, and pilot this, to try and get it going. And then if it works, beautiful.
Limited to three trucks for the first trial or something like that?
I don't know that you want to limit that. I think you limit it to however big the space can be.
I think we pick a lot.
Yeah.
And we've talked about a couple of different locations and, uh, we measure out that lot and then we decide how many can fit in that lot. And then that's how many that we will allow.
You have to make sure that they get their truck size when they come in because they're all different sizes. Trust me, I learned the hard way.
Through the chair.
Have you gotten any input from any food truck companies or food truck owners?
Not really. Um, we've been looking at, at successful ordinances, um, coming up with this stuff.
I think if you talk to food truck owners, you're going to find out there's as many things that they want as there are food truck owners.
Yeah.
Everybody's going to have.
I, I just thought some honest input would be helpful.
They look to you for guidance, basically, what you're going to allow.
Yeah.
Through the chair. If I could just get clarification, we're going to do blocks of Monday through Wednesday, Thursday through Sunday.
I'm not going to say that's set in stone yet, but when we come back, that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm hearing.
But the idea is to allow them to stay overnight. Yes, no?
We haven't crossed that bridge.
We'd have to amend something to do that.
Yeah. We'll have to look into that for sure before we say yes or no.
I think probably it can be handled with a traffic control order, but.
Yeah. We have to just look at that.
Just have to look at that.
Yeah. Because I think that would be beneficial.
It would be.
Anybody else have any other comments on that?
When we're talking downtown, we're talking like DDA area behind, behind the buildings.
Yep. We, we've talked a couple of different locations.
Okay.
So we haven't really, haven't really decided what the zone's going to be, but we've talked about a couple of different locations and then we'll go from there.
We're, we're going to know before you, they're set in stone, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. You guys.
Make a resolution to accept it, yeah.
Yep. So what else? If you want to quickly talk process, what we'll probably do next is we'll come back to you guys with the first reading of, of the ordinance amendments. Um, hopefully we can try and get that together, maybe even for the next meeting.
We didn't decide on the price.
That will be next. That'll be, we're, we're, we've got to study what the cost should be, right? How much time is going into processing these, administering this? Um, that way we can make sure that what we charge is covering our costs, um, but not overcharging. Um, so that'll, that'll probably come when we do the final reading of the ordinance. Um, but so.
Can I just, yes. If they do purchase the license, it won't be just for the, the few days they're going to be here or the, a lot of it going to be a private property. It'll be a year's license.
So the license itself is a year long license. The location permits are shorter duration.
Or free.
Or, well, or no permit needed if you're in the, it's kind of your, your gamble, right?
Right.
It's your gamble. You can, you can try and do it, but you got to make sure you get in. Um, so that'll be part of the process and then when, when we, um, probably when we do the final reading or the meeting thereafter, we'll come back with, uh, a policy on, uh, the food truck zone, a policy on, um, the location permits for public property. Um, and then, well, the private property will be part of the, because, because that'll be part of the ordinance. Um, but our policy for how we approve, give, essentially give permission to a food truck to apply for the pu, pu, permit on public property, right?
Through the chair, just one last thing. While you guys are coming up with that, is there any way you can identify city owned property locations potentially?
Absolutely.
Like, I don't know if Quant Park considered a location? Is the parking lot right here by the fire department considered a location? Is that city property, right?
It's all, it's all location.
So is there a way you can identify city locations just for future reference?
Yeah. And that'll be part of when we come back with the, uh, policy for, uh, giving permission for city property.
I think if food truck owners had an idea like, wow, that's my big location, you know what I mean? Because of an idea too. And plus gives us an idea where the truck.
Absolutely. We wouldn't ask you guys to give us the authority to, to give permission for city property if you guys didn't know what city properties we were talking about. Um, absolutely. And then, and then the, also when we do the, uh, food truck zone policy, it'll, it'll lay out the current.
We get some overtime this week.
So, through the chair. I'm going to assume that the, um, amendments that you want to, the ordinance are going to be a little vague because we want to do this by policy and not by ordinance?
Yeah. It's going to be reasonably broad with the idea that the policy slowly narrows.
Okay. Okay. So I know what to expect.
It will be a policy not, when we cover that, it'll be a policy now that that way we can change it as we go.
Right.
So I'd like, I said earlier today, I'd like to do this for summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's our goal.
And then come back next year and say, hey, did this work? Does this now work?